All the committee of the whole meeting to order for June the fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Seven oh two. I would like to also recognize that we're thirty-five territory. And that is a fifth official land of the just place of prenation and homeland to the may be. And that we are all treaty people. Thank you. Next to make approval of the agenda, the council of its fabric. Councilor Tom, all in favor. Period. Next, we're going to go to presentations, and it looks like we have quite a group presentation. Present player, Team Fitness Plans, Catherine Youngs. We're going to have to stay because there's obviously. Would you like us to introduce ourselves first?
Uh, yes, our. Yeah. And I believe there is a president.
I never received it.
Oh, I sent it twice, but okay. That's okay. So, uh, my name's Catherine Young, and I live in twenty-four Graywall Bay.
That's just my column, number one thirty-five, nervous. A weird person, I live at twenty-eight Rogers Bay.
And if you don't know, then. My name's Kane Johnson, and I live on one B S W.
My name's Maya Millar, I live at one hundred.
My name's Lenore Archer, I live at the Y W C A. My name is Jessica Sodden, I live at forty-eight Pike.
My name is Sagan, I live at fifty-eight.
My name is.
Thank you. And for our side.
Uh, Chu Chong. So, council. Counselor Chris Patrick, Louis.
Counselor Dr. Prepper. Counselor John Valentino. Colleen Stok.
Councilor O'Farrell. Councilor.
And I'm there.
Yep, online, we have Counselor Lunnmark and Counselor Oberdorfer.
And we have Carrie, Throbick, and Anthony, we get us with us. And in the back, we are.
Wow, Miles Propp, Director of. And we will. Be on the.
And we have some more communication, don't bring the back here.
Still Brian, C H T M.
Uh, no, welcome, Thompson citizen.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors. Um, we're present kind of fact that Thompson doesn't have enough infrastructure and activities for our youth. And that has caused problems. We see some of our team. We tend to get in trouble when they don't have something productive to do. Um, our youth are also reading an increasingly sedentary life, and we would like to propose one way that we can hopefully fix this in Thompson. We are proposing, uh, that the area behind the jumpstart courts, uh, be developed into a playground in the style of American Ninja Warrior obstacle course. As it will be a free way for our youth, but our teams specifically, to, uh, have a productive way to spend their time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. Um, I'm here to talk to you about how free fitness activities can benefit teens. Such as the, it keeps us out of trouble to start as we have something to do. It can help with our physical and mental health. And having an inclusive and accessible environment can help us gain trust and socialize with others in the community. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Um, the quote for the playground that we have, uh, been given, based on a design that the students chose, is for three hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. This includes, uh, equipment delivery to Thompson, the installation of the equipment, um, and the labor associated with this. It however, doesn't include the land or clearing the land. Um, and the playground is designed to be low maintenance and comes with a very excellent warranty. The metal parts. Um, have about a hundred year warranty, that all the plastic parts have a fifteen year warranty, the ground has a twenty, the ground cover has a twenty-five year warranty. So it's built to be low cost over time, but we understand that there is a high cost upfront. So to meet the cost of installing the playground, we have come up with four pages of fundraisers. The students here helped create that list. Um, and so we will also be applying for several, several grants. Many of these fundraising events that we have come up with will be ways that we can increase, uh, community pride and involvement. Um, some of them are going to be one-off events. Some of them are going to become annual events that will help increase community cohesion. And also, we know that our C N P and Thompson have a plan to, um, improve their relations with our youth. And to do so, they have been involved, involunteering with the elementary schools. But this would give them an opportunity to reach out to our youth, our older youth and our teens. And build those positive relationships between the emergency services and our.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm here to speak on the importance of team ownership and engagement. And important reason why we, the team of Thompson, should have ownership of the playground is as the name until the team playground, it's going to be viewed for us. So we, the team, need to be in charge of all this ownership. And we are going to pick the name, the masterful, the designing colors of those obstacles. And so on and so forth. Another making me there to be, is to be a presenter responsibility in us. As we get participating, grant writing, fundraising, and putting in, and putting in work in general into the playground. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we've been to Madam Mayor and the Council. Uh, oh, sorry. We're here to view our, our, our. We're trying to fundraise for our community, and I, the two-spirit individual, Artie Parker, was come to talk on behalf of Glow and Yak. As the leader of Glow and Yak and being indigenous as myself, I would love to see this park be built in the youth of Thompson. Investing in our youth, in the future of our community, ensuring cultural. The educational and career opportunities are rarely available to us. In my point of view of this park in Flinger, sorry. In my point of view, this park will pull our youth away from all the negativity stuff being shown, we're seeing, we've been showing scene. Not only this park can build friendship, but also can build a family altogether. In general, we're in a place, wait, sorry, in general, this place can be all of us, can, can have all of us come together and not only have fun, but. Uh, show that we have responsibility for us. Thank you to everyone who's listening.
Thank you, I agree with all that you said.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and State Council. As a member of Yak, I would love to see this park built and placed inside our community, as I believe it would be beneficial to our community and youth as a whole. Our youth of Thompson should have one place to hang out and be with each other, as I know it would lead to great, great connections, excellent team building and. And great bonds. The community of Thompson should celebrate our shared northern lifestyle, as well as respect and understand our differences relating to it. Thank you, everyone, for listening to my speech, and I cannot wait to see this become a reality. We'd like to have wonderful evening.
Thank you. Very good.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and prospective council. We request that you allow the land to be donated to the committee and approve the construction of the playground. We also ask that trees in the area are cleared for construction of the playground, and that you accept the donation of the playgrounds when, once it has been completed. Fundraisers, fundraisers held with the help of our youth are already being planned, and we ask that you keep funds raised in a trust for maintenance. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Um, I did try to send things over. Apparently, there was a bit of a technical mishap. Um, I do have the concept, um, and pricing of the playground. Uh, I have several copies, if you would like to. Um. As well as, we have spoken with the designer, face out of Steinbeck, and they have done a mock-up specifically for Thompson of what this playground could look like. Um. We haven't officially decided on the name. The students are currently voting. It will be one of four free words. Um, that this student are looking at.
We're one to I. Okay, that's all.
I promise I did try to send.
I will, I'll reach out to you and then share with the council.
Yeah, absolutely. I also have, um, four letters of support. Um, from, one from the School District of Miss Creek Lake, one from Student Services, one from the Artie Parker, um, Phys Ed Department. And also, uh, the Y W C A is writing, uh, a letter of support. It just came in a few minutes before this started. As well as, uh, the link, because, uh, we have many of the same missions of giving our youth something positive to do in Thompson and increasing community pride and cohesion. Um. I have, you could get those to. To. And I'll send you over the one that I.
You have any questions or, uh, comments?
We can promise we have thought of some of the concerns, so the playground that we picked, anything that looks like a rope is interrope. It is a steel enforced cable. Uh, these have been installed in many cities, living in your cities, and they have been tested against multiple tools. They're very hard to dismantle. We've also, as we've heard, included into our project costs, an amount of money that's. To possibly replace any damage, because, uh, we are realistic that this is Thompson, so we are including that. Um, and we would also say that we have reached out to, um, A and B contractors, as well as Hydro Manitoba, to have lighting installed. Uh, so that it is lit up, and we have also. We also know that the city is planning on installing cameras, and this might be the best place to have it, because it is going to be an area where all sorts of people are gathering anyway.
Thank you for your presentation. I think it's an awesome idea, personally. Uh, I don't know why someone didn't think of it earlier. Then, have you started fundraising already, or?
We haven't started fundraising, however, um, we have reached out to B and G Thompson to become a nonprofit under their umbrella, so that we are able to do fundraisers and grants officially. And to earn money and write tax receipts. So it's all above board.
Well, I hope this moves forward, because I think it's an awesome idea.
Oh, for what?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate your presentation, and, uh, I encourage that you do more of this, because this is, this is encouraging me. Uh, question about the infrastructure. So are those all steel beams and painted, or just a coating on top of it?
So, uh, it's a coating that is done at the manufacturing level. Um, so we, once we pick the colors like that goes as.
So my other question is, the maintenance part, is it pretty costly in the future? Have you guys do the math?
So.
Some sort of, uh, consultation about that?
Um, I mean, maintenance is designed, the designer said that it is supposed, is designed to be low cost in future, is, um. But there are parts that are, so, but they shouldn't be breaking down before like ten, fifteen years. And we're hoping to include that, as we said, some of our fundraising events going forward become annual things that we would like to put the money in trust, so if things do need to be repaired, the money is already on hand.
Just a last question. So I, I, I missed some of the, uh, the comment about that, or, uh, about the, uh, the maintenance part. So, sounds like you guys want to own this and look after this. Am I right?
No, we would like to turn it, once it is completed, and the money has been raised, including the portion that is signed. To incentivize for maintenance and replacement of parts, that it would all be turned over in trust at the city. And going forward, every year, some of the events that we would already have planned and done and been successful, that we would be continuing as an annual event. The money would continue to go into trust, so that when those repairs are needed, the money is already on the hand. Will be the idea.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you, Dr. Prepper.
Thank you. Thanks very much for your presentation and all of you for speaking. It's Gary's stuff. They do that. Did well. So I have a couple of questions. I would, um, look forward to moving this into the budget discussion to see where we are with grants and where we are for our future upcoming funding for next year. So you have the, uh, net, uh, we had net cost to be one sixty-two eight. So the difference with your three thirty-six quote is coming for.
And it's. Oh, sorry. Um, that was like the estimated cost when we, we priced this out, and I met with the Department of Rec and the Department of Lands, so that was very, very beginning. Um. The, we added a couple obstacles after we looked at that.
Okay.
Um, and then adding the P S D, the G S T, as well as the labor, the moving the equipment up, that all.
So that's how you get to the three thirty-six.
Yes, I do have the official quote that we were given. It just happened after this.
Yeah, no problem. And the other thing, I think it's important to note, if you're going to partner with Boys and Girls Club for grants. It's always important to reference our community safety well-being plan, because it is one of our pillars for low-cost recreational activities for youth. So make sure that you always include that in your grant applications when you're bringing those forth. But, um, I would look forward to moving it on to see where we are with, uh, projects in the future. So thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. We did want to win Brian's call. No? Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Yes, I appreciate your whole presenting. Thank you, everyone, for showing up. Next, we're going to move on to our comments and feedback. Anything on the day, anybody wants to comment on? If you come up with state your name and make a comment. Second time.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Council. I believe that this obstacle course could be incredibly beneficial for the teenagers in our city, because it would give us something interesting to do and a good reason to go outdoors. It is an excellent mixture of exercise and fun, and it would be a safe, entertaining thing to do during the day. And I also have additional feedback from other students. It would add something to do while being at the courts. This court can be, uh, multiple career options, and it'll boost the morals of children and give them something to do and a free activity. I think this would be a good idea, because it would be affordable for youth that can't afford playing expensive sports. It also keeps kids busy and divert their mind from doing bad things. I hope this, you take my words into consideration. Thank you. It would be an accessible and free recreation for the community, keeps us fit and healthy, keeps the kids busy while doing something good for them, and may encourage socialization. Making this part would lower crime rates and keeps kids busy. It's a fun, enjoyable part for everyone. It's an activity that is affordable, possible career option. It's a good way to bring people together. It is important to consider the needs and interests of the community it will serve. Overall, creating this park is a valuable investment for providing for ninja warrior and social interactions. This park gives kids activities that are affordable. It can lower crime rate rates if kids stay busy, stops kids from smoking and drinking because they have something to do. I think this would be a good addition to Thompson. No cost, kids can stay active, and it's fun for everyone. Thank you for putting my idea into consideration. Thank you.
Oh. Can you state your names? What was your name?
Maya Millar.
And your name?
I believe a lot of people want this built, because it was, it seems to be an amazing idea. Build this unlocks a new challenge, a new thing to attempt, and a new experience. So we encourage teams to engage with physical activity more, or build a mindset that doesn't get off the path at all. This build is spungly, spungly, having surveillance lights that have, that can overlook the basketball court. Whether, overall, so lovely, and very.
And your name?
Dear Madam Mayor, my name is Ten Oluwashi. Uh, I think to be a really good, to be really good for the youths, young adults, and to add this, especially. Especially that might be next to the basketball court. But it would be nice to have a park for the other ones, because when other kids go to the park, they get scared of, or they might get kicked off the structure. Also days, also days are getting hotter, and a lot of people are getting outside now, uh, except for the other people. Cheaper than playing sports, no cost, lower crime rate, less use of drugs and alcohol. Fitness, keeping kids busy, career option, help kids stay active, help families save money, help kids stay active all the season. Uh, I think we should have a obstacle course so more kids can go outside and play. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything more impressive than your first presentation career prior was to actually use your community comments and feedback, then get that point home. I really, really draw. Hey, is there any more community comments and feedback? Then come to the front.
Go on in.
Come on in.
So. Sorry, hi, uh, we're obviously from the Thompson Junior Soccer Association. Today was day one. Uh, it's been crazy busy. It's been good. Uh, we just came to see, uh, if you guys have come to a decision on our request for the field, the fields to be maintained and, uh, the piece to be cut back.
Yeah, it's on their agenda tonight, so it's actually part of the meeting, and having a discussion later on during this meeting about what they wanted to.
Okay.
Will we be able to feedback at that point or no?
No, that, that, it's council talking. Okay, if you want to make comments, you'd make it now.
Okay, um, just, just a few things. We spent, uh, the entire weekend, uh, at the field to making sure they were, uh, safe and, uh, presented. Thank you. Uh, we spent a lot of times painting all the goals. Uh, we put down some, put down some, some dirt and open holes, uh, put down some grass seed. Probably total of ten hours, all of us, uh, were there. Uh, today was day one, the U sixes just finished, the U twelve's are on right now. I just came here just to see what was going on. Uh, it's been great. Parents and the kids just had a great time. They, the fields looked, uh, professional. They looked amazing. The nets are white again. They're all colored. Again, we put in the time. Um, it's important, safety is most, mostly the biggest thing here, and, uh, someone who's grown up playing on these fields, I know. I've seen some pretty bad injuries, so we went ahead and took it upon ourselves, because I get it, you guys are busy and we didn't get an answer back. And we just didn't think it was responsible on our end to, uh, start the season with fields knowing how they work. But again, yeah, we just want to let you know that we put in our time, um, for the kids, for the parents, uh, for our organization that we're obviously year one with it. We've been working extremely hard, and we just want to see, hopefully, we can work together, and, uh, again, nonprofit, we're just trying to. Have any kind of help we can, and we'd love to get that from the city as well. If I was anything to say.
Yeah, just in regards to, I saw the memo and the way it was written up about how the decision, there's options that you guys could go forth with today. Um, I was the one who proposed to Sonia that perhaps the maintenance and the painting of the lines should be part of the rental, just like you get lines on a hockey rink when you rent it. The Zamboni cleans it before you get there. It should, it should be sort of the same for a soccer field. A soccer field isn't a soccer field without lines. And a baseball diamond isn't a baseball diamond without an infield and the outfield ball, right? Um, so we just wanted to, um, hope that we could get that, so that we weren't paying, um. A very large sum to help the lines maintain all summer, um, by having to pay for painting of ourselves when there are other people who are using the field. So that's one of the things that we had brought up in our discussion, and I think that it's great that she's putting it in work to you guys. Um, to see that the fees would increase, uh, by ten dollars an evening per field is a little bit hard for us financially. Um, we budgeted to, um, rent the fields exactly the amount of times, um, a hundred and twenty-five slots this summer. And then we also budgeted to paint the lines according to the fee and buy schedule, the hundred and eleven dollars for the first time around, and then the, the re-repainting of the lines, which is only eighty-three or eighty-four. Came from the field, my numbers are right there, but it's a lesser amount to repaint the lines. So we had put that in for, just in the budget for painting three fields and repainting three fields. Uh, an extra two times for the summer, less per month. Um, that's in our budget, and we, we can afford to pay that. Um, if we get hit with, um, rental fees going up ten dollars per field per day, we are going to be stressed to be able to pay that bill if we get the invoice this summer. Um, because that's not something that we were anticipating. We were looking at all of our future or future, our past invoices. And basing it on what we have been charged in the past. We've never been charged for the painting of the lines. In all of our record-keeping for TJSA, we've only ever been charged for the rental of the fields, the rental of one ba-baseball diamond, which is also at Burtwood that we used to use for our tubits. And we used to get charged, um, you guys used to supply us with outdoor toilets at one point, which we now get. But I'm just pleading with you guys not to hit us with the bill that we can't, we can't afford this year, but we do appreciate that you guys are going to discuss. Um, rolling the maintenance and the, and the painting of the lines all into the rental fee. We, we would appreciate that. And then we also would like to just ask if maybe a portion of that I T F fund that we pay into every single year, if a portion of that could be used. To help us maintain the fields, like Nuno said, we, we did go and buy, um, topsoil and grass seed and, and, and that's all. Like, we don't need the fields dug up necessarily, but we, we just need the holes filled in, like, just, just that little bit of maintenance. Um, it wouldn't take a lot of money year, year by year.
Couple of coats of paint on those nets.
Yeah.
You drive by there, it looks like a brand.
Yeah, I hope everybody has taken the time to drive by those soccer fields, and if you haven't, please, please, they look beautiful and so colorful.
Thank you. I, I do believe we've heard you.
Thank you.
We've got a lot of things to consider, so we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, for you.
Thank you. Pass on from, uh, community, uh, comments and feedback to report. Six point one is the check register. Anthony?
Okay, so there's a memo there for council along with the mark check registers. Our CFO is not here this evening, but if you have any questions, we'll take them down, and we can get those answers for you.
I'll put a call.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. Uh, check number, uh, I think for February twenty-third. Check number zero zero three five eight seven nine. And the amount is thirty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-two, that was, I think, you got that system. I wonder what is that for? Like changing, is that true, or anything that, can you?
Sorry, is it three five eight?
That's enough. For a month of February.
Schneider Electric Systems. Schneider Electric Systems, Schneider is with our water plant.
For the water plant?
So that'd be our, um, annual fee that we pay for our maintenance fee for the software that runs the water plant. That's, that's a software that we're eventually going to change out to another. Another, um, uh, updated software. For now, we're stuck paying that. It's proprietary software.
All right, but another one is, uh, for the month of March. Twenty, two thousand twenty-three, zero, zero, three, five, nine, six, five, all the way to zero, zero, three, five, nine, six, eight. And check was written four times to the Thompson homeless cell. I wondered that fund is from the vote through fund or just the fund from Thompson? From our city.
Uh, yeah, all those top, the homeless shelter ones are vote throughs from the federal government. It's vote through fund. So that's funding from the reaching home program.
Okay.
Um, the federal government gives that money to the city, the community advisory board allocates the dollars and then the city cuts the check. It flows it through to the homeless shelter. Okay, so their claims have been behind because we required additional financial reporting. Once the reporting was given to us, then we released all those funds.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, check number zero, zero, three, five, six, seventy-five. And the, the amount is four hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred. I'd like to know when this, uh, project been awarded and. Do we follow the protocol or not? Uh, check number.
So that's for the ground tractor, that is for the excavator, I believe, which is part of last year's budget. So under the new procurement policy, the administration, as long as the cost is within the budgeted amount, is supposed to go ahead and make the purchase. So that's per council's policy.
Okay, but I'd like to, uh, if this is the case, I'd like the Madam Mayor to, uh, interpret it, the, uh, recruitment policy under the award process, page eighteen. Section two, council approval, A, F, and C. And number three, reporting, A, B, C, D, and E, and section four. That is part of the recruitment policy. I'd like to understand that, but I'm not expecting today. But I'm just saying, that is the, uh, the point I want to make about this, uh, so-called budget. Approval, but under this policy, they still have some sort of oversight. Power to us. So anyway, it's passed, but I need to know, I need to understand this process. For the future. So anyway, the check number zero, zero, three, five, eight, zero, three. And, uh, I believe that is, uh. The company to me is a, is a wetting truck company. Uh, somehow I have questioned why are we hiring those when we own a hydro bag? So just one.
I believe we had to hire them because it was a hot dig. And, uh, no one was hot dig certified in the community at the time. So we had to bring in that specialist to do the hot dig. Meaning that there was electricity in the area and you need special qualifications to do, uh, a wet dig or whatever that's called using a machine. You can't just use the machine that we have without proper training.
So is for, sorry, is it for the Princeton Tower? I'm not sure. So I can't understand that.
This is Badger Daylight. Is that the one you're discussing? Three, five, eight, oh, three? I'm not sure the job that it's on, but I remember that's when we discussed having to hire them. It was because it was for a hot dig. So again, around the electricity, you have to have people that are certified to do those digs.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Tina, you can, uh, move the check registers forward for. For council.
Nope, that's for your report.
That's okay. Um, next is six, one, two, six point two development.
Yes, good evening, uh, Mayor Council. Uh, I'd like to start off my presentation by introducing our new chief building inspector, Dan Haylen. I think you all knew Dan. Dan started his role as chief last month. So, uh, I brought Dan along tonight to do, uh, we're gonna tag you in the presentation tonight. I know you're tired of always hearing me, so, uh, Dan's really stupid department. So I'll start off my report, uh, as I normally do with our review of our ISA projects. Uh, our capital work is, is, uh, getting rolling very quickly here. Uh, no pun intended, the road real work, I believe is up here. Uh, they are working, uh, their curb crew is currently in town removing curbs. They've done a lot of curb and gates preparation on numerous streets of the two and twenty-twenty-three project areas. Uh, once this is, uh, once the curb, uh, removal and base work is done, they'll make preparations for the next, which is the concrete crew. We don't have a confirmed schedule yet, uh, on the, the next, uh, the next concrete crew arrival. I hope to have that in the next little while, but they are expected before the end of June. Uh, the supervising engineer, this is the Ecom, they are also in town, so, um, maybe we can just working with the Ecom. And then the relationship between the engineering techs and myself. Um, the road renewal team is working the ten-four shift, so they're on for ten days off for four days. Water wastewater renewal, uh, they were traveling up on the seventh, which is Wednesday, and they will start work on Thursday. Their priority will be the completion of the Juniper Drive, which is the twenty-twenty-two work package. We've got seven mains and forty-four services complete. Uh, they're anticipating, uh, twenty-five to thirty working days for that. Once that's complete, they'll move over to phase two, which is Westwood. And, uh, there's already good information provided out. We're working on the temporary water services for those neighborhoods. And, uh, I'm cleaning up a couple of just loose ends on that one. Um, A Accurate has Stab Tech as their supervising engineer, so we've got Ecom, maybe we have roads. We've got Stab Tech and Accurate on the waters. Uh, their shifts are twenty-one, seven, so they're on for twenty-one days and then off for seven. Uh, our asset management system, uh, we're moving on. We've made a decision to host, I think, that on tonight's agenda. It's bumped, okay, so we'll come back to, uh, featuring on that one. Facility, uh, yes, it's been removed, the TRCC and some activities have started. Uh, we, as I reported last month, we had a geotechnical RFP out for assessments in City Hall. We received three submissions for these. We're undergoing the final reviews and verification with, uh, our goal is to award that project. Uh, I said next week, that's actually this week. So by the end of this week, we're hoping to have that awarded. Uh, money for this work was approved as part of last year's capital budget. We've got another one out for the building envelope study for the public safety building, uh. This, when I wrote my memo, it was supposed on the age, we've actually extended it by an additional week of request from other consultants. We have received, um, a fair share of questions. We actually had one company travel to town last week. Um, on their own, uh, we, we leave it in all of our contracts, exciting visits aren't mandatory, but they can be done. This one company took it upon themselves to actually travel to Thompson to look at the building, look at the envelope, look at the drawings, so they can better, uh, propose their, uh. Proposal. And finally, at the public safety building, the remediation agreement is been finalized for the cell painting. This is the remediation work as per the contract that was done back in twenty-twenty. We're not working between the consultant, the earth, and P and S to land out some dates that agree. Um, they, the contractor proposed different days, we said no. So now we're just trying to find some new dates that will work. And I'm hoping to get that, that those dates finalized in the next little while. I'm now going to turn over to Dan, talk about, uh, developments and building. Part of the report.
Contractors developing a plan and expectation. For the month of May, we had the permits issued, total construction value two million, three hundred sixty-eight, uh, five. Year to date, just twenty-three permits have been issued for a total construction value of twenty-four million, one hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred five. Uh, and it compares to two thousand twenty-two. There was sixteen, uh, or sixteen first construction value of six million, seven hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight, sixty-two, sorry.
Thank you. Any comments on these reports?
Thank you. Thanks for the report and I think we all congratulate you, Dan, on your position. Uh, it's great. I have a question on the ISF reporting. Is the communication process that we're gonna, that we have a communication person, it's fantastic, the, the communication to the residents. Um, I think is key. If we can be a little bit more proactive than we were last year when we were doing these. Even if we can have like a question and answer kind of wire put out or anything, like we have the curb removal people coming. One of the persons, we have to go back, like, if we can give as much information and communicate, I think would be what we owe to the. Taxpayers because, um, they need to really understand it's a big project and. And what it's going to look like for their area or their particular property, I think is key. Um, and then the other comment I had was. Communication and, sorry. Oh. The asset management software. So did we not? I know this was phase one, but did we not already upgrade the software for the departments or, so you had, um. Childlets or? Don't we have something that we're newer that we're using? I'm just looking for some feedback if you guys like it.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, so I could, so yes, we have engaged a new software provider there called, uh, Central Square Software is called Lucidity. But that required it to be hosted somewhere. So what's coming to council next is they've been working on it, the assets are being put in and developed. So that side of it's being prepped and ready to go, but we can't roll it out until we decide if we're gonna s- keep on local servers. Or if we're gonna put it on the cloud, kind of like Amazon store services. So we priced that out. We're bringing it back to council to give your decision, hopefully the next committee to hold, so that we can roll it out to its next phase. So, yeah, we've, we've engaged that part of the software and now we'll move it to the next stage. Once it's on the cloud, then we should be able to start rolling it out to the public as well as to our staff.
Okay, yeah, I'm not very techie, so that's great. But I thought that, I thought we had kind of given something like for. Tickets or building inspecting, I thought that there was a new thing we were using.
So I think maybe what you're talking about is that permit?
Okay.
So, and.
Is it good? Like, is there any feedback on that?
Yeah. It's a hustle.
Like, is there feedback from the department on that?
It's working well. It, it captures everything, captured all my inspections, live, in, in time, photos. Feedback, so everyone involved in the project can be uploaded into the system and see it as the whole order builder. Uh, the cell and we go through the whole. System of a building permit online, so I don't have to go onsite, file, come back, make notes, I can do it live. In person, in my truck, in one to the next.
He's, he's got it open on his tablet right here.
Okay, perfect.
It's been a, it's been a game changer. Um, people that we've talked to, I, I think everyone's liking it, at least I haven't heard any negative. About it, I don't know what you noticed.
Very simple to use, you create an account and talk to go and shoot through all the email saying. Use a kid, create a password, punch in your, everything you would actually do on a building permit. Then it'll ask you what attachments are required for that certain program or that permit. And then it, it kicks me an email and, uh, notifies me that there is a different.
So they don't have to come to City Hall to do this anymore. They can use this from their kitchen, from cafe, from McDonald's, they can send it to Dan. Twenty-four, seven, two, sixty-five, there's no, have to work around City Hall hours.
Good, thanks for the feedback, that's what I was.
I think the one living thing is that we're gonna have to ask council about payments. So that's the one living factor is people still have to come to City Hall physically paying in person. And you'll see the administration is going to be asking for council support to set up online payment options. Uh, and credit card payment options so that people can start doing these things remotely. Then that would enhance the user's experience, that they wouldn't then have to even physically come to City Hall. They can fill out the permit and pay for it right online.
Danny, invoice and everything ready to give a permit, so it's all just checks and balances in the system.
That's, um, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, other parts for all?
Just a quick question, is this program your public knowledge that they uses? Is it enough, uh, communication to the public that they, they can do such a thing now?
We've, we've put it out through our, so we, uh, it's also been part of our, uh. Ian helped me out, it's also been part of our little city of Thompson Square and its citizens since. Uh, February, uh, the front desk staff actually have a one pager, so if anyone comes up in the hospital building permits. We actually created a one pager for them. It looks like the little QR code that you scan at the phone and it'll actually open right to the website for them. So we've, we've done all the communication value as well as anyone that calls Dan, he gives them the, the, the. Here's the website, here's how you will find it, so.
If someone really does run into trouble or anything, they can do it the old fashioned way, like it's been into. The paper way into the system. There. Here's that, I guess. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Mayor, just. Our senior manager mentioned about credit card payment. They mean, are we gonna open the door so I can pay my property tax on credit card?
The previous council had discussed making those options available, so that could be something that council still supports, we, we could move ahead on. There's other things such as virtual city hall, which allows different types of bills to be checked or paid online. Uh, but that would have to be a council decision to budget.
Looking forward, thank you.
Alright, um, I'll send the cover.
One of the facilities, um, the question I have is one, I've got that cloud or, you know, stuff like that is where. Me and Sonia went to the TRCT and we got that with regular key and. You're investing in the call-up system. Not sure, um, that's expensive or.
Um, the administration is going to be bringing forward options for that as part of budget. The old tap systems.
Yeah.
We can, yeah.
Thank you, Madam. Thanks for all of that for your report and again, congratulations, Danny, you're probably a Thompson homegrown boy there. Next, we'll move on to recreation report.
Uh, there's a report attached from the director of our recreation who's not here this evening. Uh, she's out of town. Um, it's for information. If you have any questions, we'll bring them back and have answers for you at the next meeting.
Thank you for having the group. Thank you. Next, we're gonna go to six point four, the public works report, Neil.
I gave you, uh, the public works crews are working on Monday to Fridays, if they have until ten PM. Street tubing operations started on May fifteenth, uh, and since I wrote this memo, there's updates of where what we complete, so so far the. Downtown Core, Thompson Drive, Pre-Road, Eastwood area, the Southwood area, about completed. Uh, we're currently working in the Burnwood area. You might have saw us in the Westwood area today, uh, only because it was government day in Burnwood, to be pretty big area, so we'll be back in there tomorrow. Our auto crews continue to be deployed as needed. Our urban sidewalk crew will be starting, uh, this week, we're just waiting on line locates. And as we caught up with our lawn repairs last year, our concrete crew will also be conducting a lawn repair as or right there fixing the curb for that law. Uh, dust control for all our gravel roads is scheduled for this week. I have the email today just to see when, when this week they'll be coming to do it. Same company, that is highway two eighty, so they, a lot more every year. Our sidewalk painting started on May twenty-ninth, uh, and the traffic line painting is currently scheduled for the first week of July. Contractor worked out pretty well, was able to get that people nickel dated last year and they're gonna try to do it again this year, but there's no bear. Uh, they are the same contractor as well, that's high basis. Uh, for our parks and green spaces maintenance, the Monian Trail maintenance continues. Unfortunately, today it was reported to me that there's water damage. Due to the area section of the Monian Trail. Uh, which is a shame, we put up five week project and they're, uh, resurfacing that entire portion of the Monian Trail and. Now we're gonna have to go back and try to repair it, hopefully it's solid and well, if we're done and. Uh, crews are working on cleaning up and repairing equipment in all the parks and pot lots. Uh, we are planning to paint all the equipment at the pot lots this summer. Uh, the splash cars have started off on May thirtieth. The operational hours for these have been set for ten AM to eight PM. Uh, for what is full weekend, it's fairly busy on Saturday at the brewery's splash car, which you can see. All ballfields, sockfields, uh, lines have been painted. And our grass cutting program, uh, starts officially started today for all green spaces, parks, ballfields and the cemetery. Hopefully the weather cooperate with this, we can actually catch up with the grass and get it continued remedied. Uh, for the Oasis Bowl grounds, they're now operating in their summer hours, so they're even Monday to Friday, eight to five-thirty and Saturday, eight to three-thirty. Uh, the one-stop drop for the household hazardous waste, uh, is also open Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays for any E-bays. Light bulbs, paints, oils, batteries, et cetera, and there's no cost to dispose of these. Our compo site is opened up outside of our public works yard. Uh, we take grass and leaves only, you're getting a large amount of brush. Dropped off there as well, unfortunately that can't be put into our compo. But it can be disposed of free of charge at the Oasis Bowl grounds. So if anybody has brushed that they needed to, please take it to Oasis Bowl grounds, there's no carriage to dispose of it. Just fortunately, it just caused more work for our city employees to clean up all that brush and all of the Oasis Bowl grounds over here. Low iron sewer, uh, we have thirteen main repairs, four water service repairs, two hydrant repairs, four sanitary main repairs. Uh, there's, if you can see on there, the ongoing work that is always on our boards, uh, as a. A, a, a living list, uh, it never, never stops growing. We might knock off a few, but there's always extras added on there, so.
Yeah, I also wanted to know that Neil brought in a lot of new red clay to the ball diamonds. So they'll notice that a lot of the ball diamonds are looking. Lot better than they did in the past years. So he was managing to source some clay that was affordable. Cause the last few years it was uh very scarce and hard to come up with.
Thank you. What's for one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I just wondered, do we have a street sweeping policy in place?
I don't believe there is a street sweeping policy.
The reason I ask this question because I have people ask me about how we start the uh street sweeping, whatever we paint. How we paint the area? Is it more said or decided by the director or that question? So. Do we need to have a policy in place so the public will understand this or is all based on the head of the department this group? So what are we trying to uh make this world better?
Yeah, right now it's a decision of the department. It's a decision administration how it's done. It's council's prerogative though. So council wants to develop a policy. The council would have to give us that direction that they want to reduce.
I'm not saying it's necessary to develop, I'm just asking, there would be some sort of matrix for us to to conduct the job. So that way. The public also understood how 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 would they work, right? So uh, that there will be one common question. Second thing is like, what is the timeframe for uh the fire hydrant repair? Because there is a couple around the city that we. Very careful quite some time and uh I wondering that is any timeframe?
I have to defer to the director. I know there is a priority of how repairs are done when it comes to utility. So I could defer to him on how that works.
Yeah, I'm working to come through a priority, whatever affects them and where the people most of them. There's a water main repair that is causing no water. Or extreme level of water pressure to residents. Their water main is usually at least a hundred homes for effective, that's one here in Vermont priority. Uh, for a fire hydrant, we will go up or bear those. Trying to get those as as a secondary priority. Um. Fortunately, if if another call comes in or another water break happens, it just kind of resets our priorities. We go back to the water main. For water service line, they're not allowed to have a no water situation at a home. So that has to be our number one priority. Uh, when the fire department does show up, they don't come empty. They always have water in their truck full. Uh, and there's always fire hydrants within that three hundred feet radius. So there is fire hydrants acceptable for them. So if there is a down fire, they are aware of it. They don't go and try to try to use a broken fire hydrant or anything like that. Probably prior to that, as as we can.
Anthony?
Yeah, I see the director of development. There are some hydrants that are fenced off that are part of the capital projects. Um, project that were under way. Some of those hydrants aren't live because they're on the line. They did not yet charge. So they have been framed in with uh with so fencing and the fire hall is knows of it for this hydrant is not being owned. So if that's, if that's the case of those hydrants, they will be, when that line gets charged and that project gets finished, like Jumper, for example. Those hydrants that can't be will be taken off. The hydrants will be brought to grade or whenever done and finished.
Yeah, thank you. See, my my own concern is not about the uh. The priority. I I don't understand all this. To me, I don't know how to justify priority. To me, it's a high priority spoken. So whether there's a life or not life, I don't know, right? The public don't know. Public will not understand that. All they see is like. What if my house were fired? Is this working? They all they worry about because it's still not repaired yet. Some is over a year. So when you talk about priority, I I don't understand that part. How can we we use the priority to explain to the public when come to say in part, right? It's broken. The fire hydrant is sideways. You have barricade. So I I think somehow we have to have a timeframe. Somehow I I to me, it doesn't matter. You have other water break or whatever. That gotta be have a time to say in a month. We're gonna put a new one there or in a in a year. That is gotta be a timeframe cannot be pushed aside, pushed aside, pushed aside. Sometimes we we have so many project going on every day, every year. So this can be forgotten about it and people concerned, especially around that area. So another question I I've been asked about private fire hydrant. So if the fire hydrant is owned by the city or owned by private. Some of the uh fire hydrant is located into a private land. So are they supposed to look after themselves? Or the city have a law to obligation to protect that fire hydrant is functional? So those kind of thing, we 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 never discuss about it. So that's a question where I I I like to find out because that is a concern from the public about the private. Or city-owned fire hydrant. So can I have those?
No, yeah.
Answer later on like.
So I I wanna answer now. So um, when it comes to the um many of these, that's something that would council have to set a level of service. So right now it's done administratively. If council wants to change level or the order that's done, you'd have to do it again like a policy. Where you say this is the expectation of the administration to have this done an X amount of days or done this way. Then the administration will say this is what it takes to make that happen. So council wants to do that, just like the snow cream policy. Council would direct us to develop that based on what. Level of service they want to see, and we tell you what it would take to do that. The council would either resource it or not. So that's the way to do that to, if you wanna say I want this done in three days, then we need to know what council's expectation is. So that we can then present that plan to you, what equipment, labor and that cost on the. With respect to the private hydrants, probably ask Neil to answer that, but we have to know specific ones because there are some. That are most are owned by the city, but there are some that I believe are on private utility areas such as in condo type areas for other developments. So we have to know. Who specifically it is. And even when it isn't on our land, we'll normally send the fire department to speak to the people, but they have to get theirs fixed. But I don't know if uh the director has anything further.
Yeah, basically, so there is some privately owned fire hydrant that that has to be helped to be mostly repaired. Uh, the the landlord uh owns all utility draw and for structure of your ground, which includes your uh cap reasons. Sanitary system as well and require so. So be their responsibility. But if we notice or come across one that's broken or anything like that, we will notify E F S. Uh, so they can go and and speak with the property owner or property managers so they can kind of protect their right by now. If they need need someone to come repair for it, then you can always contact us and plan if we can work out the.
So is that mean the private home they can use the water out with the fire hydrant then? Is that a law?
Use as in just open it and let it run?
Flashing because this requirement, you make sure the water fire hydrant is working for firefighting reason. So for a city, city would do that maintenance itself, but a private home, are they supposed to do it? And if they do it, are they violated the law by turning on the water and let it run for an hour or a day or something like that?
I don't have that answer. Every day I'll look into how that works. I don't think we have a policy in the.
Okay, so I'm gonna back to that the the about the priority thing, by the way. I I think somehow we come to safety. There's no such thing about the council put a priority or budgeted for them. The safety gotta be compassed. Regardless, if it's broken, I think the administration have obligation to get it fixed. It doesn't come to us to say, well, do we put the money to do that? I think safety is more important than anything anything else. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And just make sure that uh your ideas are written down so that we can move them forward. Uh, question for one.
Uh, quick question. Are we adding? Ball diamonds to our grass cutting this summer?
There's always been part of the process.
There's always been burning red, thank you. Uh, sorry, not ball then, soccer then.
You burn with soccer field to for the, as long as I've been with the city of Thompson. Have been cut by the city of Thompson. They are not city property. Well, they are properly escorted. Uh, but. As long as I've been with the city of Thompson, we've cut them, we've been in alliance, became the deals, but they are not the city of Thompson.
Also, my brother. Thank you, Madam. Question I have here, the splash pad. Um, or splash park. It says it's closed at eight o'clock. It is now closed. Um, we're gonna say is there any way that we can put it up like an hour or so more? How, what do we need to do? Because it closes too early. Right now it's eight o'clock. So all everybody goes down. I think this is, it's cooling off now, you know, I mean. Need more.
I believe it's on a timer system and those are hours we traditionally kept. So if there's a desire from council to extend those hours, council could let us know, like we. You let us know that you want it running until nine o'clock, ten, whatever it is. And I believe it's just set into a timer system. So that's really, council's not happy with the hours that we've set. We just have to know.
Thank you, Mr. Ronkey. Yeah, I'd be all for extending it an hour, especially with the long day like we're having now.
So I'd ask if there's a consensus of council to change those hours.
So, fans is willing to, okay, go.
Okay, we'll uh make a right arrangement for the hour to be added and we'll all, third communications.
Anything else? Next, we're going into public works seven, seven point one is a review of the enterprise agreement for the fleet vehicles.
Yeah, so we're private, our previous meeting of council, council had said that they had approved us entry into one of, they said that they're really good. Uh, approve us to go into an agreement with enterprise for fleet management, but they asked us for copies of the agreement. So those copies have been provided here for council's review. Um, and then council also asked us to reach out to other communities. To get their feedback on how it's been working with enterprise. We have reached out to several other communities in Manitoba with enterprise. The feedback that we got is that the program is so new that they didn't have sufficient feedback to give us yet. They all said that we've only been in the agreements for about four to eight months. We don't really wanna give. Um, feedback that it's positive or negative because we haven't run it long enough. And the only other feedback that they had was that. It's still very difficult to get vehicles because of the shortages around the world, but supposedly improving with a vehicle. It had to do with the computer chips, um, but there was still a low quantity of vehicles available. So that's the only feedback that we've gotten. Um, council still uh desires us to bring this forward. We would bring it forward for a vote at the next meeting of council. Or if not, um, the administration really just wants an answer. Do we proceed with enterprise or not? Because we're so short on fleet vehicles, we have to do something by the way.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I reviewed this all again. I also reached out to a few of those communities and I'd like to see us try it. Um, I think we're at a bit of a crisis point with the shape of some. So for the hundred and thirty-five thousand a year, fourteen vehicles, I mean, we can't even buy two new vehicles nowadays for that amount. Um, I think we do have to, if we do do it, we have to understand the return on investment is timed through this. It's not an instant. It takes time to get your return back. Um, when the, in the presentation and in the agreement, you see that you build the equity in the vehicles at about the five year mark. So there is actually a lower cost of ownership for us. And I think that we don't have money as a city to replace our fleets or to replace as many vehicles as we could. Do it through this program and it's not working anymore how we're trying to do it. Um, so I would like to see us at least try it. And if it doesn't work and if other. Municipalities say it's not working and get out of the agreement, then at least we've tried something. Um, new and a little bit more up to date with how municipalities are being able to manage and replace their fleet vehicles. A little bit more of an affordable cost. So I'm all for giving it a whirl. I think we have to, we have to give it a try. That's just my my thoughts. Thanks, Mr. Ronkey.
All, all very long, Mark.
Uh, I agree with the deputy mayor Valentino. We have to try something. The the other thing that I think we're forgetting is we don't have uh. Staff to deal with all the different types of vehicles that we buy. If if we bought one standard kind of vehicle and somebody could be trained. To fix uh, whether it be a Ford F one fifty or a Chevy Silverado or a Dodge Ram. And every one of our vehicles was that same thing. Sure. But if you have different kinds of vehicles, there's different uh uh programming to to read each one of the computers for each different type. There's different courses that each one of those different manufacturers send their staff to uh to understand those uh problems. Our mechanics are heavy duty mechanics, as far as I'm aware. Uh, I guess I could ask the director of public works that, but I I was certain that was the case in in the past. And this would take care of that for us. It gets rid of uh. The problems of of uh. Purchasing or selling uh vehicles. Uh, there, they do this for a living. So give it to somebody that's more efficient with it. It it scares me to give away our, the vehicles that we do have and not have any control over that, but I'm sure that this agreement, after I've read through it and. My eyes were bleeding from torturing myself. Uh, it it looks pretty good. Um. Other folks are trying it and and nothing changes if you don't try and make change. So. Um, I think it'd be more efficient and uh, thank you. That's.
Also, over.
I got no problem with trying. But if you want to try it for a while. There's no good. We gotta look at what our costs are gonna be on getting out of it. They already got fifteen new vehicles. But after six months, we're probably gonna have to buy a vehicle, uh, fifteen vehicles. And we don't want to carry on, but we got fifteen new vehicles. We're worrying us. It's all good, but you're going to think about trying it for a while. Make sure we know what the cost is if we're gonna get out of the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? What's for one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First question I have to ask is this project been tendered up?
Yeah, this is tendered up through canoe. So as a member of the A M M, we are part of the canoe purchasing pro spa program and canoe tendered this. So it it meets all the free trade agreement requirements.
Last time when I asked those question, I still haven't got a response from the administration. What is the hour of maintenance? The cost, the mechanical from the uh, from the public work? I still haven't got the data. What is really cost them? Because one of the reason you guys proposed saying, this costs a lot of time for the mechanic to look after the fleet. Which they are heavy duty, they are not all of the mechanic. I get that part. But I like to know the data, what exactly caused them? To look after the fleet. So I don't have the data yet. And then second question I asked, because right now we have those asset manager, we all install GPS. So I also want to know the data. How many hours and how many miles per day for each equal uh, uh, those truck that we use to to justify. To enter this agreement. So uh, and also I look, I look to the agreement, I do study the agreement. If I'm wrong, please correct me. We don't own the vehicle. We are leasing from them. So because they say the register and everything is still under lesser name, it's not rest, less ceiling. That means we are the less season, we do not own the vehicle. So my question, let's say we go ahead with this project. After so many years, they 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 replace a new one for us because we continue leasing from them. At the end of the term. So perhaps like ten years later. All this vehicle become new, is all owned by them. We don't own any anymore because all that we own is all going to retire. Or go to the John Yack where. So what happened after ten years? If that, we if we decide not to continue, we have no more vehicle to use. At that time, we have enough money to purchase some of the new one to to add back to our fleet or what is the, what is the result? And is that mean that we have to continue with that because the 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 process we happen? So those are the things I I kind of confused. What is the best benefit? And and another question I had to ask is about the security deposit. How much is that? Under the agreement, the uh, the fleet management. So what is that security deposit means? Are are we giving each uh uh truck that we lease from them? We have to put X amount of uh deposit because this agreement doesn't give us any numbers. So I I don't know what what to say, good or bad. Agreement is the standard. When you go to lease a vehicle, that's a standard agreement. It doesn't tell us much about the pros and cons. But what I study is, we don't own that, we just lease from them. From what I gather information by talking to some of the big organization.
Yeah.
Typro used to lease those. They say it's so expensive, yeah, so end up they bought whole bunch of them instead of leasing them. So I I don't know, Valley did the same thing. So I don't miss a good deal or bad deal. People did that already. People tried that, the method to 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 find a vehicle. People did that already, people tried that, the method to, to, to find a vehicle to continue servicing because they might not have enough people to look after the, the, the mechanical part. So my last point, Madam Mayor, do we consult with the, uh, the union about this privately, because I believe that's how you, 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 you create a, what you call apprentice program for heavy-duty mechanic. By fixing all this monitor thing, to get them interested, eventually they can, they can try to challenge or, or, or become a heavy-duty mechanic, but we take away this training ground. Basically, we take away this training ground, ground for our internal employee or the union worker to have opportunity to become mechanic eventually. Do we consult that? That's, that's what I see, the disadvantage by having to contracted out this fleet, but other than that, I think it's very, very straightforward. How much we willing to spend, what is the end goal? Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why we brought the people from enterprise to speak with council before, was to answer any of the technical questions or worry about that. I believe in that presentation is when they made the presentation of what the cost would be. But any agreement that came as a final agreement would have those updated costs attached. Um, with respect to talking with the union, it was members of the union who were in support of this. Because then they could focus on their heavy-duty mechanic work instead, and we've actually just hired an apprentice, I believe. Who started in the last month or two in the shops, so we are also engaging apprentices in our, um, in our workshops.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When we talk to the enterprise, I ask a question, I say, look, when we have vehicle that's sent out to repair, and because they're not guaranteed that we have a same car vehicle for us to use. It could be Ford, it could be Dodge, could be GM, any vehicle. So the vehicle is sent to different dealership down there and repaired, and then they send a bill to enterprise. I said, and enterprise send us a bill every month, right? I said, do you add extra money to, to send us the bill? When it total after, the total amount, but I didn't answer my question, they go along the bush, so I didn't get the answer.
So outstanding questions that council has, I would recommend that you put them together, email them to me, and we can send them to enterprise. We can get those answers back to you, and we would share them to all members of councils that. Any of those outstanding questions that you feel enterprise wasn't clear on, we'll get those back to you so that you can be informed as soon.
How many small motor repair mechanics have got compared to, to work on vehicles, they got, how many in our staff?
Zero.
We got no mechanics, well, the heavy-duty mechanics, I would say qualified, right?
We have heavy-duty mechanics only, I believe.
Yeah, we currently have two heavy-duty, heavy-duty mechanics and one apprentice. And just by it happens that that apprentice has a red seal, automotive ticket. Why do you stress right in the heavy-duty standup?
So why do we personally leave with God know?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to know where we are with the process, like, can we move this forward to the council meeting and have those questions there, or what would administration like the process to be?
Yeah, that's, we're looking for clarity on what you'd like to do, do you want us to bring this forward, that you're having a vote on this? Do you wanna keep it, um, and wait for more questions to be answered? Or if you're not interested in it, we want you to tell us so that we can then bring you a different way of purchasing vehicles. So we're looking for the consensus tonight of what you'd like to see next.
I'm not trying to say I don't want to try new thing. But it's too early to make that decision to move forward to the ball. To me, those are the questions need to be answered before we can form a final decision together. Unless majority already want to do that, of course you can manage to do that, but I think it's, it, it's not right. And those question is legit question, are we willing to look at the organization? The future plan that we don't have any training ground for, for those apprentice, or we want to just go ahead and do something, I wanna see what is exactly benefit by having someone else, a third party to look after our fleet. I still cannot see the benefit unless someone can convince me.
Well, put down your questions, just that, get them back to administration and we'll.
How is this, about what should I, you need to put down, this should take a minute right now.
If you pass them through me, I'll make sure you get the answer, thank you.
So I would like us to move it forward to ca- the council meeting, we had enterprise meet once with council, not all council showed up. Then we had enterprise meet with council again for the presentation. And then we asked, we had our questions, and now they've given us the agreement. So I would like us to move this forward to the council meeting for the vote to either way, and in the meantime, you can still email your questions in before it goes to the council meeting on Monday. That's how I would like to proceed, and then it either gets voted in or it doesn't.
Uh, Council Oberdorfer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, yeah, I am in support of, uh, having this move forward, um, and taking administration's recommendations on pursuing this further, um. But I would be interested in some information from administration in terms of how this, I know we haven't went through a budget process yet, so just in terms of how this impacts us financially in comparison to owning our own fleet, I know we've been have, we've been struggling uh, with purchasing vehicles, so that's been a big issue for us. Um, and I do, I was part of the presentation, I know enterprise did present us with, um, numbers in terms of what the cost would be on their end, um, but I would be interested in having a conversation kind of around the financials and the benefits that we see, um, with that, uh, when it's brought forward to the next meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Can I assure hands, who would like to move it to the next meeting with administration answering our questions in between? Move to the next meeting. Um, great, this development eight point one, it's a letter from Minister Smith, Minister of Municipal Relations in regards to fin- funding for the zoning bylaw and development plan project.
Yeah, I'll give this much a lot of. Yeah, so earlier this year, uh, we provided an application under the building sustainable communities, uh, program uh, for the amount of sixty thousand dollars for the, uh, updating of our development plans and zoning bylaw. I'm very happy to say that we are successful in our application, and we received fifty thousand dollars in helpful comments. We are now working with, uh, Brent Mack, our district planner, to put a scope of work together to get this out into the, uh, my, at least all been.
Any comments, questions on that? The ninth program is safety. Review of the funding agreement between Metro Liquor and Lotteries Corporation and the City of Thompson.
Yep, so for, uh, many years, this, uh, Metro Liquor Lottery has provided a grant to the City of Thompson to help support the CSO program, I believe that started around fifteen thousand dollars. And our director has now worked them up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, so this agreement, um, what's, or if signed by council would allow that money to flow from lottery to the city in support of the CSO program. So, pretty straightforward, looking for a consensus from council to allow us to bring it to the next meeting, uh, so that the resolution can be voted on.
If I assure my hands, then going for the forward.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Just a clarification, please. Under this agreement, I, I believe there's no brain, a hundred and ten thousand we take, right? But under the appendix A, what is this, uh, requirement is allocate to four, who time? Equivalent position for community safety officer, is that money to be there for?
No, so the city already allocates for four, they're aware of that. So they're basically saying, keep your complement of four, and that's part of the agreement of getting this money towards them. So yeah, there's a hundred and ten thousand we're gonna pay for four, council already funds four. Then we can have this money to offset some of them.
Because how I interpret is like that is criteria, you must use it with them full position. So if the money is not enough for full positions, that means we are, we are, we are, we are, by, uh, void this agreement, that's how I look at it, so that's all I'm gonna be sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Is it a one-time payment, or is it a manual payment?
They make two payments throughout the year, so upon signing this, we'll get the first fifty-five thousand, and then six months later, we get the next fifty-five thousand.
And that's it?
Uh, the, the, the contract is negotiated annually. So every year, we get an increase, I believe last time it was a hundred thousand or ninety-some thousand, so we've gotten another increase.
We basically got it every year for a lot.
Yeah, we get so much every year, and myself, for one, and I live, I was living in this council, she always said we never get enough back. They take too much out of this community and give us very little. I think we should push that, keep pushing that narrative too, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, uh, thank you, that definitely is, uh, improved over the years in the amounts that we receive. Number ten is recreation.
Because we were all by hands, you had a question. Okay, thank you.
An email from the Thompson Junior Soccer Association to, uh, in regards to reduction of fees.
There's an email here from the Thompson Junior Soccer Association requesting the reduction of the fees. And then you'll see an associated memo from the Director of Recreation with some recommendations and, uh, requesting some discussion and decisions from council. Um, as you see noted in the memo, the City of Thompson maintains the verbal, uh, soccer fields, even though we don't technically own them, they're owned by the school district of Mystery Lake. Um, we're not quite sure how that arrangement came about, it came about many years ago. But the organizations book the soccer fields through the city, and the city charges fees and maintains them. Uh, one of the big requests from the, the soccer association is for upgrade to the field. Uh, which puts council a different vote decision that you don't actually own the land. Um, how do you upgrade land that you don't own? So the, uh, council would have to come to some sort of agreement with the school district, or the school district would have to do the upgrades, but um, I know the, the director here says that it might cost from ten to fifty thousand to repair those fields. But my discussion with the Director of Public Works is you're probably talking more a hundred plus thousand to do some of the upgrades, because extensive ditching required, water drainage and a number of other things have to be done to those fields. That have to be probably done over three years, because the field would have to be, uh, repaired in rotation. So, um, I believe there has to be more discussions with the school district of Mystery Lake on who is responsible for maintaining these, who's gonna pay for any of those upgrades. Um, council have to have their discussions in budget as well of what they want put towards us, then as you as you see, there's a, a recommendation there from the director, um, to start discussion with council on what you'd like to do with respect to the fees and the requests. And then there's also the part that there is a discussion in community comments of rolling in the, the line painting fees into the booking fees rather than having those as separate charges. So it's really to get the discussion going with council, uh, where you'd like the administration to go with this.
I know personally, I would like you to set up some meetings with them and, with that, and, uh, get some clarification on, even on the hours that they use and the hours they work. And I know we have to go with our fees and price, we've got a lot of sporting associations that choose our facility, so, the impact, what you do for one, you basically will have to do.
So just for clarification, would you like to say that means with rec, or what do you mean?
With rec.
With the school district?
I'm thinking that's sort of there, and maybe a new school, uh, conversation? The cost of what it would be to upgrade.
Uh, yes, I think school district should probably cause in the ditching and anything like that, and we maintain the cost of maintain, man, man, maintaining the cost of, uh, maintenance. And everybody else is gonna just counsel, I would say, doing what last year's favorite.
Yeah, I, like, I don't think we can have more meetings. I think we have, yeah, we can have more meetings to discuss like capital upgrades and all this stuff, but they're actually looking for an answer based on their budget and they started soccer tonight, so. I know we talked about it a little bit at the school district meeting with the school district, I can't remember, I've been gone for most of the month and May, but I can't remember what we ended up discussing with them at this, at that school district meeting, somebody refreshment.
Yeah, the school district meeting was basically the administration to work with their administration just to figure out what some of the costs would be to get it up and running for the beginning of June, but there was no decisions made on the long-term, who would be responsible for the fields, oversee those long-term upgrades that are real hard. So it was really just a what, what would it take to get us to today? Um, so if they could start their soccer, but that was about it. And the arrangement that was made is that the city would prep the fields, the city would paint the lines, and the school district would paint the overhead, then that's and whatnot, so that's the agreement that was made between our administration and theirs.
Okay, so I, like, I think this is much more discussion moving forward, but as an organization, they've just started up, which is great, because I don't think they had soccer last year for a few years, and this is a new group and they're really gun hold, so I think that's good. And if they built their budget based on last year, I agree with Council Ober and that we just keep the cost same for them for this year, but we continue the discussion and figure this out. Like, these capital costs of now like ten thousand, now we're talking hundred thousand, but we just can't make an agreement and then not talk about this, like, we have to I, I would be in favor of keeping it the same for right now for them, so that they know what they're gonna pay. And then they should also be a part of the conversation on us seeing their budget at the end of their season. So we're completely aware of what their finances look like, so then we can make our decision based on knowing that we're not gonna bankrupt soccer or anything, but a bigger overall picture with the school district, us, and then with junior soccer after they get through this first full year of starting up again. And, um, move them forward and move this whole soccer field discussion forward, because it's gonna be the same discussion every year. I don't know if that would then be, I'm fine with keeping it the same, but we thought it continued to get into some kind of an agreement with this. It's not our land.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, yeah, so just to follow up on the comments by Deputy Mayor Valentino. Um, I agree, I think that, um, we should leave the, the fees the same for this year, we certainly shouldn't be, um, increasing them, but um, I am curious about how the conversations with the school district have went, or if those conversations have started between administration at their their administration and our administration, um, and if there's any updates from that end, thank you.
Yeah, so we have had initial discussions with them, like I said, it was really about how do we get to tonight, so that the lines are painted, the grass and all that was ready. There have been other discussions that the work that has to be done, so with respect to the ditching, the resurfacing of the, uh, what rotation we would do them in, but there's been no common ground of who would pay for it. So my impression of the school district was that the city would be paying for it. And the city administrations was that, well, we don't own the land, council wouldn't, shouldn't have to pay for all of it, so that, that is unresolved, I would say, in terms of, uh, the big upgrades to the, to the properties.
I feel trouble to, uh, to discuss about this, because of we are talking about four to five hundred kids that registered to play soccer. And yet we are sitting here to talk about the small internal amount, and to me we've been giving a lot of way to a lot of organization for half price. Why can't we do that to the same, especially this is falling to our part of our well-being, part, uh, uh, project, to make sure we, we encourage more kids to get involved and do some healthy thing. It's trouble to me that we will not have a agreement, I believe this administration level should be able to implement this. Just, I, I, I don't hear they say asking to upgrade the field, or it's clear it's like, they wanna make sure it's maintained properly and cut the grass, but today we're talking about hundred thousand, I didn't hear, I didn't hear that, I didn't listen from them.
There was an ask, I wanted a presentation.
So anyway, my, 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 my suggestion is that we should give them a half price, based on the normal practice we be. The normal practice we've been doing, especially for the kid. Thank you.
Half price of what they paid last year?
Yes.
That you're talking about?
Yes.
With a new one? Uh, Councilor Coburn.
I could respond to that, so the administration is handling it. We have to follow policy, the policy says recharge or submit a fee and fines. This is a request outside of policy, which is why it's a council. So that's a council decision, we can't do that ourselves. I mean, council that decides to go differing from whatever the policy that the administration has.
Thank you. Councilor Coburn.
Uh, who's liability is somebody that turned here?
The land is owned by the school district, so that they're following the school district's insurance.
Is the soccer association could they'll do carry insurance?
Yes.
But I'm not sure how their organization works.
Okay, thank you.
So what is your recommendation on?
Uh, move forward and give them last year's rate, like the mayor's there, he's there already budgeted. As, what is that, thirty three percent off roughly?
From what?
No, last year's rate would be this, whatever's in the P. P. I. share, so there'd be no change.
Okay, um, anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna ask, um, right now we have last year's fees or half price, um, also Oberdorfer.
Great, can you repeat that?
Okay, so right now we have two suggestions and I'll show the third, uh, one is that for the. Soccer club to be charged half price of last year, uh, we have one person for that and we have two people for charging them last year's fees.
Can we vote to support reducing their fees at this time if we haven't went through a budget process?
I don't know this, Anthony.
It's whatever council's prerogative is and then we have to make adjustments in the budget, so if there's a shortfall of funds, council will then have to fund that. Through the budgetary process to make up the difference.
Okay, let's hear. Councilor Oberdorfer, do you have any, which way you want to go?
I don't feel like I have enough information to make a decision about reducing the fees. Um, I would be comfortable saying uh to maintain the fees the same as they were last year. That being said, I'm not saying that I wouldn't support a reduction of fees uh if further information was presented at a future meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Culture Chong.
Madam Mayor, thank you. My suggestion is. Like, we can, we can take off fifty percent of. Reduction, I think that's a good gesture to the the new group. That organized this soft team for, you know, over four hundred kids. I think many better, many better to to them, because they, I think they have a limited budget. So let's try to help them.
Thank you. Arthur. Chris Patrick.
Thank you there. Uh, I'm in kind of in agreement here with Council Chong and Council Wong. Uh, I would like to see them get a somewhat reduced rate, I don't know the fifty percent is the right number, uh, but we do need to support junior soccer. It's very important, it's up and coming again in the community and I feel we need, we do need to support it somehow.
Thank you. Councilor McConville.
I'm in agreement with that. Um, I'm not just too sure, it's just a good percentage of last year. Or this year, like from last year, I would agree with you.
You're in agreement with your child, what we did last year?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam.
Sorry, any clarification, I think you said you wanted fifty percent reduction?
No, is that from fifty fifty percent from last year?
The fee hasn't changed between last year and this year, but has council held all their fees the same? So, so yeah, there's no last year, this year, it's that fee, whether you want it, this, the beat up fee or fifty percent on.
Same as last year. Last year, yeah. Okay, who am I missing?
It says here to feed. Okay, to keep costs reasonable for both the organization's sports and the community users increases. For our rental fee to include line painting, the city could paint the lines on a monthly visit. Increase from twenty two fifty five to thirty two fifty five. That's for a four R L, right?
That's one of the options that was presented.
So is it, is it twenty two fifty five they're paying now?
I believe that's what the individual rental costs.
That's what you're paying for each field?
Yeah, so this is the, that's the cost we're discussing right now, if you want to keep it twenty two fifty five, or do you want to reduce it fifty percent?
Okay, what's the thirty two?
That was a suggestion from the director that if you roll in the line painting costs. Rather than charging them a full separate one and do all the line painting just for them, you do it as a per booking cost that everyone pays. Then recoup your funds that way, so that's a completely separate scenario of what council's discussing at the moment.
So, okay, I would agree. To give them that fee for this one year. But we'll redo it later.
Fifty percent of the twenty two fifty.
Yes. I would agree with that.
So you're taking off from the other. Councilor Lundmark. Uh, right now, the two options, um. Basically, we're moving ahead with soccer that we have is we have uh three counselors. Uh, using last year's fees. And we have uh four counselors that want to go half price of last year's fees. Uh, to the soccer, uh, one comment was for one year only, the others haven't said how long.
Yeah.
So one year, the others are in agreement with one year.
You should.
When it create agreement with the the consistent same cost as as last year. Um, we're doing more for the saving a lot of money. So the city's giving a little by, you know, providing some more services, more line painting. And then the same cost as last year, which is within the budget that they said that they had. Correct, am I correct? Um, I I do know that this recreation is so important, it's the fastest growing sport in Canada. And probably in the world. All you need is a ball and a place to play. And uh. We we know how much we pay for the T R C C and uh for the recreation that happens there. And uh, we know. That taxpayers have to pay for a a lot of that uh low cost uh. Sport, and we're not going to have a pool for another couple of years, so. Uh, I'm still fine with them paying what they they budgeted and they planned for. And we are, my bonus here, I think, is that that we're we're doing more line painting. And I, and I know this isn't part of the conversation at the moment, but. I do hope that we continue to have more discussion with the school board so we know who's going to do what going in the future, but I don't want to drop that, I don't want to drop the ball. But yes, uh, status quo, I guess.
Anybody? Uh, Councilor Oberdorfer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I just wanted to seek a clarification um regarding Councilor Wong's uh comments earlier. Um, so I know we have a policy regarding reducing fees for um like special events and things like that. Uh, for rental space, but what about user fees for the T R C C, like I I've never seen that come forward that we've been asked to reduce user fees previously. Um, so I'm, I guess I'm just making an assumption that user fees are. Paid uh in full for use of the T R C C for things like coffee, that type of um recreation. Um, so I just wanted a clarification on whether we do actually reduce um. Fees for user groups for certain things outside of events. Thank you.
In my understanding is user fees are paying a hundred percent of the cost. Um, and that when groups want um a difference, they come forward and request for changes to be made. Either through a contract such as the North Stars or others would ask council to change. That's, I believe, what I remember from when we used to have the committees, but um user fees themselves are normally at a hundred percent. And then there's policies that allow for rentals of physical facilities that we just counted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so right now we have four for the high half price, we have. Council Wong, Council Chong, Council Fitzpatrick and Council Coburn. And for last year, maintain at last year's rate. Deputy Mayor Valdo, Council Oberdorfer, and Council Lundmark. And I will, uh, for the last I vote, but we will keep it at last year's rate. Uh, we will do more and I think we as a city and our workers have stepped up to the plate above and beyond and we will continue to do so. And when I checked out some fees down south, the average club down there charged about two hundred dollars. I happen to have a friend that got off the plane in Toronto and their son plays soccer, he's four years old, it's his first year. Next year it starts at seven hundred dollars. And we're very lucky, we keep it low cost for the people that need to have it low cost here and will continue to strive for it. So I think if we're talking twenty two fifty, uh, for, you know, we could maybe go to sponsors of the soccer. Community, I think if they went to sponsors and got them to sponsor a night, if they put that out, then oh, I definitely do it. And get the fee shot paid with the community through that. Thank you very much. I think there's five votes to. Give up the. After space? Number eleven, it's legislated letter from. Laurie Lady Assessment Services in regards to twenty twenty four.
So it's a letter for information where they'd like to confirm the border revision for the city of Thompson for October sixth at five P M. So unless there's any objections for council for that date and time, um, the order revision will be set for that date. I believe we have to give a brief forth a resolution.
For revision? No, because it was.
Okay.
Yeah.
So really more for information for council.
Any questions on that? Seamus. We're going to go to number twelve. In the office of Mayor. Proclamation is whereas older adults in Manitoba are valued members of society and deserve to be. Whereas the abuse of older adults is an ever increasing issue in our society that crosses all socioeconomic boundaries. And whereas most abuse of older adults is hidden. And whereas ageism is a major cause of abuse of older Manitobans. And whereas older Manitobans deserve to be treated with respect and dignity. To enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers and important and active members of this province. And whereas preventing abuse of older people will help improve the quality of life for all older adults in Manitoba. And will allow older adults to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vitality of Manitoba. And whereas empowering older persons is an effective tool in preventing the abuse of older adults. By the virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Thompson, I hereby proclaim June fifteenth, two thousand twenty three. As a world elder abuse awareness day in the city of Thompson and encourage all our residents to recognize and celebrate their consciousness personally. Thank you. That would be very important for the. Uh, just before we adjourn, I would like to recognize that one of our own kind of have forty five years working. With the city of Thompson, so I'd like to thank Tony Marcus for all the service to us and being able to counsel we. Thank you for serving. That offer journey. Deputy Mayor Valdo, Council Fitzpatrick, all the favor.